I believe so.
Okay, Mike, you're good to go.
All right, thank you, Don. Welcome, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and I'd like to call to order our today is January 12th Town Council meeting to order. And if we could please take a moment of silence to reflect and respect all those that currently serve have in the past, protecting our safety, our freedom, and our democracy. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded, and I would ask if anyone is in our audience recording, if you could please identify yourself. Don, I believe we're clear to go?
I don't see anybody, Mike.
Thank you. This meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar. Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Jeannie, as of yesterday, no one was signed up for public comments. Is that remaining the same?
Right, no one has signed up for public comments, no.
Council comments. Don.
I'd like to inform everyone that on February 4th, you can start taking out nomination papers for the town elected positions available for the June 8th Annual Town Election. My position is up for reelection this year, and I'm informing you that I will not be running for a third term. I made a promise in 2016 when I first ran for the council that I was not making this a second political career, and I am not. I ran to offer the first ever Town Council and new form of government some experience. Well, to put this in perspective, except for five years of retirement, which in retrospect turned out to be a sabbatical, I've had the privilege of serving the people of East Long Meadow as an elected official since April of 1988. That's 28 out of the last 33 years. I am both blessed and humbled and our citizens' confidence in me throughout these decades. I hope to have more time to help my wife Maureen brand and get the word out on our crew store travel business, which with COVID effects on travel, our team has been working remotely since March, and we hope to announce the grand opening of a new location around the time of my term ending. Like, we really can control the timing of this, really? Anyway, in addition to continuing my practice as a full-time real estate attorney, I will help her with promoting the business. Thank you, Team East Long Meadow. You have no idea how great it's been to serve you, but you're still stuck with me till June, and I'll have a more sappy speech awaiting. Thank you.
Oh, jeez.
Thank you, Don, and all of us appreciate all you've done, not just for the council, but over the years, and we wish you the best of luck rebranding your business and wherever, wherever things take you, but we will be reaching out. There will be, I'm sure, opportunities to serve on other committees, and I'm hopeful that you'll be available to help us complete some of those areas that you have an extreme amount of knowledge with. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Under, anyone else with council comments? I have a comment myself. I'd just like to remind everyone that, looking in, that we have numerous vacancies throughout the year. This is a moving target for us. We've had this conversation before, but there are numerous committees. We have our, our Town Council, obviously. Planning Board, Conservation, Planning Matters, Budget Finance, Evaluation, Licensing, Bylaws, Charter Review, ZVA. We have our School Committee, the Library, Historical Commission, Housing Authority. So, anyone that feels the desire to reach out and, and help us fill those vacancies as they occur, you can contact any of us council members or reach out to our Clerk of the Council, Jeannie, or Town Manager, Mary. And hopefully, this is a good advertisement to fill some of the vacancies and have people assist in all these boards that I just mentioned. Something else I'd like to mention is at our next council meeting, we will have Steve Flanagan, who's here with us this evening, and we're going to get into the areas of, of our budget and probably touch on capital and such. And I think it would be a good idea, rather than hammering Steve on February 9th with questions we might have, that we could possibly pass some of those questions along to Steve. Prior to that, it would give him time to research and maybe answer those questions on February 9th. Does, does that sound like a plan, Steve?
It works for me. The more time, the better. I can have an adequate answer hopefully for you when, when you ask.
Okay. On that subject that kind of coincides with this, we all have our, Pat?
I think Jeannie has her hand up, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jeannie.
You're muted.
Muted.
Thank you. Do you want to have the counselors funnel those through you to get to Steve, or just go directly to Steve?
The proper protocol would probably be to forward the, the questions to myself, and I'll pass them along with Steve. But I'll make sure that's done. And on that subject matter and similarity, we, we generally have our minutes that we have a chance to review prior to council meetings, and I'm just going to throw something out there that if people see changes, we might not have to wait till the next council meeting. If those changes could be passed along to myself, then I could, I could forward those to Jackie, and maybe some of the, the minutes could be revised prior to the next council meeting, which just improve the efficiency of, of our time. A little bit just about the next council meeting, I have reached out to the Chair of the School Committee and extended an invitation to them to be in compliance with the Charter for our next scheduled meeting on February 9th. Obviously, there's plenty of January left here, but at this point in time, we, we don't see the need to have a second meeting right now in January, so our next scheduled meeting would be on the 9th. And like I said, the School Committee will be invited to that as well. So, other than that, Mary, I'm sure you have a report for us.
Yes, I do. I have a brief one. Thank you, Mike. The report I submitted tonight has the attachment of the 2020 recap that I just offered for your reflection. As Mike is saying, perhaps there's a way that we can communicate to just improve our efficiencies. That, that was my intention by looking back at, at 2020 and trying to identify some of the issues and projects and things that came up over the course of the year that I thought were handled well, others that I thought we could have handled better. And that's really the only purpose of the recap was just to try to identify areas where we can improve our performance. So, you have that for your own reflection at your leisure. The other thing, obviously, recently, we did, you did waive the balance of time regarding the Police Chief's appointment. I sent him a draft contract yesterday, and he emailed me this afternoon and said he was going to sign it and return it, so I told him, let's wait until Tuesday when he actually physically appears on the job to execute those documents, because there'll be a few others as well. But I'm happy to say he's, he's in the fold. Mary Beth Dowd took over as the COA Director about a week or so ago, and she's already being a zealous advocate for her Meals on Wheels drivers, trying to get them to participate or be participants in the vaccine clinic that the Health Department and the Fire Department has been able to put together, because they do fit some of the criteria, so we're, we're trying to work out those logistics. As you know, we did finish the Employee Handbook, and I distributed that on Friday. Happy that it's been well received so far. There were a couple of comments back from our very attentive department heads pointing out a mistake here or there, so we'll make those changes and reissue the, whatever page happens to have either the misnomer or need amplification, so. But I'm very pleased that that is, that major task is finally accomplished. Let me see here. We do have several matters pending in litigation that will probably await our next executive session. The procedure of those cases is that the first pleadings are due within the next week or two. And counsel that I have retained is Sullivan and Hayes, and once those pleadings have been filed with the court, I'll be able to address you in executive session about the strategy involved in, in defending the town's position on all of those matters. On a good news front, the outdoor skating rink has been a, has now, well, as of yesterday, it had an inch and a half of ice. And they're thrilled to have a ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow, which I think I forwarded to everyone, asking you if your schedules allow you to participate. It's going to be at 4 o'clock. The enthusiasm that this rink has generated is really remarkable and very fun to see. Everybody's had a piece of the action, so to speak. The rink has been replaced once. It was originally set up on Leahy Field, and there was a hiccup or two with the grade of the turf. So now it's sitting in the outfield beyond center field, and I'm sure you've all seen it many times as you've driven down Shaker Road in the last week or two. But anyway, they, they're going great guns with reservations for the different time slots that Donna and Jordy in the Rec Department have set up. And the fundraising that we'll address later in Steve's motion has really just, just been phenomenal. So it's obviously something that is a COVID-motivated activity, but hopefully, it'll be something that the town can enjoy this winter and for years to come. COVID, you know, I keep talking COVID, COVID, and it does obviously dominate, continues to dominate our, our climate, both in, in-house. There's currently 10% of our Police Department suffering with positive tests. What happens as a result of that is that those among us who are extra nervous, I like not to put myself in that category most of the time, but anyone with an underlying health condition or concerns about their family members and, and whether they're aged or babies or whatever, it just creates a very, very difficult environment. And the HR Service staff, Mariola and Elaine and Corinne are just answering the phone. It's ringing off the hook with people calling to find out what if this, what if that. Trying to be as patient as possible, answering all those questions, but we're really yearning for the day when, when some of that COVID-related drama and trauma abates. The other, the very practical consequence is that these absences, whether you're testing positive and therefore have to, have to be out of work, or your emotional security requires that you take time off to collect yourself, is going to have an impact on, on our budget in the Police Department, to be sure. So, just a word in advance that those problems are forthcoming, but we'll manage them like we manage all the others, so. There were a couple of things that happened since this report was authored. I just want to touch on briefly, this, this was given to Jeannie's office on Thursday and Thursday around midday, and then in the afternoon, we, I had the pleasure of attending the first meeting, my first meeting of the Master Plan Steering Committee that Bethany Yao is putting together with the help of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And at that meeting, there was significant planning and introductions to the consultant that the Planning Commission has hired. It's Bartlett Consulting, or Barrett, forgive me. I have the paperwork here somewhere. But there's going to be a planning session, a visionary session. There are going to be chapter captains. The, the grant that Bethany applied for and received in order to facilitate this master plan is, is sponsoring and paying for the, this consultant, as well as some of the other outreach that's going to be done, so. The next date that I want to make the council aware of is February 13th, where that's a Saturday, and between 10:00 and 12:00, there's going to be an outreach where the opinions and, and position of the community are going to be solicited with respect to what is important, in your view, to be included in this master plan. So, there's a lot of work that's being done behind the scenes, but it's well underway. They talked about posters. They talked about all kinds of issues on how to reach out to the community. And so it's, it's going ahead, and I'm very pleased with the organization that the consultant brings to the, to the task. Additionally, we had great news from the Friends of the Library. You may recall, last year, they were asked boldly to contribute to the carpeting project in the library, and they voted to do so and, and contracted directly with Tomorrow Carpet in the amount of approximately $29,000 to replace carpet in two areas of the library. I recently had an email from Diane Tiago, who wanted to know what was left to do, what square footage in the library was left to be carpeted, and she communicated with me and with DPW, and then, long story short, she reported to me the other day that the Friends have now voted to donate or contract with Tomorrow for an additional $45,000 to finish the carpeting project in the library as a whole. So, this is really terrific news for us. It's been on the Capitol plan for years, I'm told. That was there at least last year and, and the year before, so now we're going to complete that project, and it's all through the generosity of the Friends of the Library, so we're very, very grateful to them. I also received communication from our auditor through Steve's office. Scanlon has finished the audit in compliance with the Bylaw 3.020D regarding the examination of the town clerk's books and records. You recall Tom Florence left in September of 2019. So this has been pending for a while, but at least the examination pertaining to the Town Clerk's Office is finished, and it will come as no surprise that there were no unusual transactions or activities to warrant a further investigation noted there, so. Now we still have to resolve the issue of the former Finance Director's departure in the same fashion, but I'm under the impression that that will be resolved with the fiscal '20 audit. More to come on that. The Recreation Department, in addition to their work on the ice skating rink, has submitted a bullet point of their activities. I'm just going to hold it up for anybody to see. This is, you can't read it, I know. I can hardly read it myself, but there's about 20 bullet points where they're talking about all of the activities that are going on to try to keep the youth and toddlers in the community physically active and socially involved through COVID. I can't praise Donna and Jordy enough. Their imaginations are really terrific, and their enthusiasm is boundless. So they're starting basketball, starting baseball, working with soccer, tennis. Tim LaRoca, by the way, has resigned. His last day is January 22nd. I mention that only because, well, because it's important, but also it will be the second vacancy in the Rec Department. They've operated since last March, down one, and now they'll be down two. But despite those short staff situations, they're just remarkable in, in what they've accomplished, so. There's that. And then last but not least, or second to the last, Bethany has also received a petition from the Pioneer Valley to participate in a grant application to expand rail trails throughout Western Mass. And we think that we'd like to do that and hopefully be able to expand on the bike trail that it currently exists in town, depending on how many hurdles there are to, to get through that. And lastly, we did have a Board of Directors meeting this morning with Westcom. The new radios for our police and fire will be in service hopefully within 60 days. They're doing some trial runs now, testing out to make sure that the communications are, are adequate and everything works fine with our networking and so on, so. I'll stop talking about that because I don't even know the vocabulary, so I won't pretend that I do, but it was a very informative meeting, and we're moving ahead with, with those communication issues. So, that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Jackie, not to put you on the spot, but first of all, all of us are very happy with the job you've done. You've done an excellent job with the record-keeping. So I think it's only fair to ask you the recommendation that was made earlier about once we're in receipt of the minutes. Would that help to have them forwarded to you so that maybe some of those corrections could be made prior to the next council meeting?
Yes, it would.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to overstep boundaries here. I steed the luxury and didn't want to bypass you, but thanks, and thanks for a great job. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the December 8th, 2020, open session minutes?
I make a motion to approve the open session minutes for December 8th, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Seeing that we're back here virtually, we'll go back to our roll call vote, and we'll start.
Before we do that, I just noticed one little correction on it. In the very last paragraph, as you read across, it says, "For all the fires she put out, day in and day", I think it should say, "out".
That was me. In and day out, that's right.
And that's the only thing. Other than that, they looked fantastic.
Thanks, Ralph. Any further discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call with Ralph.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay. That, the motion passes. Thank you. We can move along. I guess I'll entertain a motion for, looks like December 15th, open session minutes.
I move to approve the open session minutes of December 15th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call again with Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
And that motion passes. And approval of the December 23rd open session minutes. Motion, please.
Mike, I move to approve the open session minutes of December 23rd, 2020.
I'll second.
Hey, that motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Patrick?
Yes, Mike, I believe that it might be more accurate to say that the sole purpose of the meeting was to consider waiving the remainder of the time granted by the Town Council, because the way it reads, it almost makes it look like it was a done deal before the meeting. So, it says, "President Kane commented the sole purpose of the meeting was to waive the remainder", whereas I think it was to consider waiving the remainder and getting the vote on.
I'm fine with that. Any other discussion? Okay. I'm sure Jackie will make that change. Any other discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Another great job, Jackie.
Under Communication, Correspondence, and Announcements. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. Excuse me. I, I did want to go back to Mary's Town, Town Manager report and point out that not only did she do many, 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 many things, but she also does the things that she says she's going to do. And I just, I want to throw that out there, because that is something that's really valued by, I think, everybody that knows, that watches what's going on. When she says she's going to do something, by gosh, it happens.
That's, to say the least, a great observation. Thank you, Pat. Okay, so Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements. I, I don't believe we have any this evening. There are no public hearings. Under orders, the orders of the day, Kathy, is there anything with licensing at all worth mentioning?
Actually, we will be meeting tomorrow morning to consider an extension of outdoor dining for, it's been a concern raised by some of our licensees who have used the extension in the past. And so we will be able to, at the February 9th meeting, make a full report.
Sounds good. Thanks, Kath.
You're welcome.
Mike?
Pat?
Sorry, may I ask Kathy a question?
Yes.
Do we know officially that there are any licenses that have not been renewed? And you don't have to name who they are, but, so there may be some licenses available.
If I'm, bear me out here, Jeannie. Yes, the answer is two. One is absolutely in progress, just needing to get some things finished and get Kevin Duquette's stamp of approval. And the other one is, probably the best way to say it is unclear at this point. Is that right? Would you agree?
That's fair, yep.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Under Financial Matters, I believe Steve has a presentation to make.
Yes, we're bringing forward, as you know, the ice rink has gone up in Leahy Field. And thankfully, you know, there are a lot of generous people in this town that donated $93, almost $9,400 towards the costs of that. And so I'd like to make a motion that the donation be accepted in accordance to Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53A and a Half. I'd also like to, if possible, read the names of the people that donate, so that they can go on the record, and, and we can be appreciative of them. There is one person that asked not to be recognized, so I will not be reading that name.
Okay.
Should I start?
Please.
First one, one name is Kay. Then there was an anonymous one, Armet Trucking, Amy Johnson, Pratt's Painting, Don and Donna Shaw, Counselor Ralph Page, Porter Road Pet Care, GMH Fencing, People's Bank, Pioneer Gymnastics, Kate Forbes Rucci, Burgess Schultz and Rob PC, Katie and Gary Gray, McGill Hose and Coupling, Rich and Amy Beres, Go Graphics, Brian, Brian and Bethany Meehan, Tim Bates, Whitestone Partners, Lighthouse Liquors, and Bruce Goldman.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Mary, I, I believe you sent an email out today extending an invitation to the ribbon cutting ceremony?
I did, yes. I received that this morning from Donna. There, it's going to be 4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon at the rink. So I thought, if you're around and not otherwise occupied, you might want to stop by. I think it'll be a, a happy event that we can all share in. We're all desperate for one of those. But yes, Mike, I did send that out.
Thank you. Marilyn? Marilyn?
Mike, point of clarification. Do we need to move on Steve's motion to accept the donations for the ice rink?
We do, but I was actually going to call for a motion that I was going to have you read as a council meeting.
Okay, I move.
Once I'm sure that Steve has completed what he had planned.
Oh, I'm all set, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just follow the protocol here. So Marilyn, could I have that motion, please?
Sure, Mike. Thank you. Move to accept donations for an ice rink for the use of the purchasing, the rink, and the necessary supplies in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A 1 and 1/2.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I would just point out that, you know, you see the names of the usual suspects on there, people that have stepped up so many times, excuse me, so many times from the town, and in addition, a few new ones. So it's just, it's wonderful to see that spirit.
It is. Thank you.
Mike, could I add something just briefly? I've been giving a lot of praise to Donna and Jordy, and rightly so, but I'm remiss by not mentioning the Recreation Commission. The first time the rink was assembled, I happened to stop by to see what help I could offer. And three or four members of the commission were there on a Saturday for three or four hours trying to put this thing together. And I believe the impetus for the purchase rests with the commission and some of their, you know, ruminations about how they can keep the kids and adults active in the winter. So kudos to them as well. We often talk about the need to have people serve on these boards and commissions. And the Recreation Commission is the one commission that it, we have a waiting list, I think. It seems like there's a lot of interest. If you have kids that are involved in a particular activity, it stimulates the parents to get involved. But they're all very dedicated and really great people. So thanks to them as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, okay, we have a motion and we have a second and we have completed our discussion. So on the roll call, Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Patrick?
Yes.
And the motion passes. This is great. We have no old business, and there is no new business. Oh, excuse me. Don?
I was talking to Vice President Counselor, you know, Tom over the weekend. He asked me if I knew any updates on the street takings. And I told him I did not. And I reflected on previous town meetings and so forth, where it was almost standard operating procedure in a town meeting to have street takings. And I can't recall the last time we've had one here as a council. So that was also one of my campaign pitches in 2016 is to try to turn those streets into money, potential moneymakers as town streets, as opposed to, we're still ultimately responsible for the people paying taxes and not saving a dime in tax money by having, you know, the street not taken versus being taken. So one thing I would like to ask through the chair, through the president, or maybe through the town manager as well, is to see if we can get a status report on this for a future meeting and if there's a timeline to find out what streets are being taken and how, if we can accelerate that.
Okay, I'm fine with that. And I won't speak for Mary, but I'm pretty sure she will. And I think what we'll be doing is deferring to our superintendent. And we can probably actually schedule him to attend one of our council meetings shortly after he's been able to compile the requested information. Mary, do you have any other spin on that?
Only to let you know, we have discussed it at various intervals over the course of the year, Don and others. And there's a lot of, I don't know if these are new requirements since the last time the town took streets, but I've also talked to the state legislators because I believe that there are some issues that require legislation in order to accept those streets. But we'll go through it again. It's been kind of one of those issues that comes up when one of you or my office maybe gets a phone call from somebody who is a little bit unhappy about the level of service or the condition of their roads. But I'm sure it's something Bruce is well aware of, and I will be soon. So we'll be happy to get that information for you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other old business? And seeing none, there is no new business other than what we talked about tonight. Action items for our next meeting? I briefly discussed when our next meeting will take place and what we can plan on seeing on the agenda. There is no executive session for this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I will second that.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. I'm sure there's no further discussion on the adjournment. Ralph?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. We're adjourned at 6:36, and we'll talk soon enough. Have a great night.
Good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.